And just a minute, I'm gonna call up Pastor Nate of First Church of God, Pathway Church in Vero Beach, to give our invitation. So, I'm gonna call you up, but if you could just hold on one second. Welcome Pastor.
Let us pray. Dear my Father Lord, we thank you for who you are, and we thank you for who we are, for your sons and daughters. We thank you for opportunities that you have given, places you have called us to be, responsibilities you've given. Lord, I pray for this school board, pray for decisions that one can make, pray for peace that passes our understanding, the only you can give. I pray that we as citizens of Vero Beach will do the best, that we can to support each other, to love one another, to show your love towards one another, to do the best for our kids and youth of this community, that we will pass on our faith and our good morals to the kids and youth of this community. We'll do all we can to make sure that our kids and youth of Vero Beach and Indian River County know about you, and most of all, we'll do the best that we can to teach them, to guide them, to direct them, to lead them to you. So, Lord, I pray for each person that has a part in it, each person that makes a decision, and you give them discernment, you give them clarity, heart and mind, you give them wisdom. Lord, we thank you for opportunities you've given. Lord, I pray that peace over this board, peace with each person that is in this board. We love you, we praise you, and we pray all this in the precious power of amen and peace.
Call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. It is April 23rd, 2019, and we are in the Joe Inn Idlet Junior Teacher Education Center, and this is our normal business meeting. Tonight, the pledge of allegiance to the flag and presentation of colors will be by Vero Beach High School Air Force Junior ROTC Detachment 043, under the direction of Wade E. Doos, Chief Master Sergeant Retired in Aerospace, United States Air Force, and Colonel Michael Zoller. Please join me.
Color, halt. Coats of arms, present, arms. Ladies and gentlemen, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Orders, arms, coats of arms, forward, march.
Fantastic job. Can we tell them thank you and give them an applause? Thank you. Tonight, it's time to adopt the orders of the day. Are there any items that board members wish to move from consent to action?
No, however, I do have an item I'd like to add as an action item.
Okay.
I'd like to add interim superintendent selection.
Okay. All right. Just one second. Okay. Any items from consent, board members? No. I do have an item that I wanna, I have a question about, and that is... Okay, so it's from Consent A, Approval of Budget Amendments, and it is under the insurance fund, so I would like to pull that. All right. I need a motion.
Move approval of the adoption of the orders of the day as amended.
Second. Okay, Mrs. Justice with the first, and then Dr. Schiff with the second. Any discussion?
No ma'am.
Mrs. Baranburg, any discussion?
No.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. All right, at this time, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Rundell for the presentations, the series of presentations. Dr. Rundell?
Thank you ma'am, Chair. We actually have eight different presentations on the agenda tonight, a lot of things to celebrate. We're gonna be treated to some very special music by some of our very talented students, and that's probably gonna be the high... Although all the presentations are gonna be special, the musical performance is probably gonna be the most impressive. I'll turn it over to our Public Information Officer, Kristen Max.
Thank you, Dr. Rundell. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our board meeting tonight. Tonight, we have the Storm Grove Middle School Orchestra. It's the chamber orchestra, and they can start coming out
Board members.
Under the direction of Mr. Richard Ballinger. It consists of 28 sixth, seventh, and eighth, actually seventh and eighth grade students, right, from Storm Grove Middle School, and this orchestra represents nearly 200 students in the Oslo Middle School and Storm Grove Middle School Orchestra programs. Two years ago, the Oslo and Storm Grove Orchestras participated in the Music Festival in Winter Park, and earned not only superior ratings, but also were awarded the Best in Class and the Grand Champions of the Festival after competing against groups from the United States and South America. The Oslo and Storm Grove Orchestras have received the invitation for next year, and planning is currently underway for the orchestra to return to Winter Park again to participate in the festival during spring break of 2020. Next week on May 1st, the Oslo and Storm Grove Orchestras will be performing their spring concert with the theme Stranger Strings. Do you get it? And will be an eclectic program of orchestral music, and they will be joined by a guest artist local band, The String Assassins. With the dream of going to Colorado again in March of 2020, the Storm Grove Chamber Orchestra will now play "The Spirit of Colorado" by Susan Day. Yeah, perfect. If you can just push this thing up a little bit, can you? Yeah, perfect. If you can just push this thing up a little bit, can you? Okay. Just a little bit further in, it's only half. I'm sorry, I can't note this here. Okay, ready? One, two, and three. One more, one, two, three. Okay, freeze for your parents. Okay, great job guys. Great job guys. Thank you for being here tonight. You look wonderful too. Nice job. Thank you. For our next presentation, we have a video highlighting our autism classrooms for Autism Awareness Month, which is this month. And our district has been celebrating differences, starting off with reading a proclamation at our April 9th board meeting, designating April as Autism Awareness Month in Indian River County, and lighting up our boardroom blue in recognition of Autism Awareness Month. We recognized our students and school programs and activities on social media and in our connection newsletter, participated in Special Olympics events, and fundraised for Autism Speaks as our Casual for a Cause organization. At the beginning of the month, we reached out to a few teachers in our district who work in our autism classrooms at a few of our schools. Our idea was to highlight our autism classrooms and the teachers and students who work together to overcome obstacles and meet their goals every day. Looking into these classrooms helps one understand that there is not one autism, but several types. A wide variety existing on a large spectrum. Each person with autism has a distinct set of strengths and challenges. And the ways in which people with autism learn, think, problem solve, is truly unique. And it takes a very special person to develop a relationship, understand, and respond to each student individually. This month, we would like to send a special thank you to all of our teachers and teaching assistants who work to educate our students with special needs every day.
April is Autism Awareness Month. Join us as we take a look in a few classrooms around our district and celebrate differences.
Well, my name is Margaret Graffway. I'm here at Gifford Middle School. I have the self-contained ASD unit, Students with Autism. What we do is try to give the students a chance to practice communication skills, showing interest when someone else is talking, asking or answering questions, and then for the students to comment on the comments, to respond. And then the calendar portion of it, it's just a part of the day, try to teach them how to read a calendar and use a calendar, but also it's a time to share what's important in their lives. Just seeing them engage, and especially with the communication, when I see communication happening spontaneous with the students, it just lights up my day.
I'm Rachel Homan. I work at Liberty Magnet, and this is my ASD unit. In here, I teach grades first to fifth. We have spelling words every week that we work on that coincide to the unit that we're working on, and it happens to be the reading piece that we did in small group. And so today, we were working on reading comprehension, main idea, and vocabulary. Just watching them grow, you know, when I get them when they're younger, and then as you see throughout the years, you can see the growth and their personalities coming through, and just their excitement and stuff as they learn new things, and the maturity, and that to me is a very big part of their growth.
My name's Ryan Sandgren. I teach at Citrus Elementary. I teach first and second grade students with autism. Today, we're diving into the life cycles of a butterfly versus reading off a piece of paper. You have to make that connection. This is really the foundational part of a lot of skills that they grow. To see them persevere and to see them have that moment that "I did it", and the confidence, to build that independence is really what the students need into being a great student, which they are.
Thank you to our dedicated teachers who make an impact in the lives of our students in their classroom.
So I believe we have a few of those teachers here with us tonight who participated in the video. So we would like to formally recognize them. If you would please come to the front when your name is called, and board members, may I please ask you to come up to the front as well? So, thank you so much to Rachel Homan, who is a teacher at Liberty Magnet School in the autism classroom. Rachel, are you here? And Ryan Sandgren, teacher at Citrus Elementary. And Margaret Graffweg, teacher at Gifford Middle School. And we really just appreciate, they're very willing and happy to open their doors to let us come in, and the parents as well. We communicated with all the students' parents and let them know what we would be doing, and everyone was just very welcoming and excited that we were coming into their classrooms to highlight the students and the different activities that they did every day. So, again, thank you so much for opening your classrooms to us. One more round of applause for them. All right, ready? One, two, and three. Thank you very much. We do have one item on the agenda. Our next item is the Casual for a Cause Autism Speaks presentation. That was my mistake. That was my mistake. That's actually next month. Some of our schools are still fundraising to the end of this month. They do their Casual for a Cause Day on different days, and so we're still waiting for the grand total. And we hope that we're going to be able to give them a big check at our next board meeting. So we're moving on to the presentation from the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society to Osceola Magnet. So tonight Scott Simpson, who's principal of Osceola Magnet School, and Rachel Alexander, teacher and student council leader at Osceola Magnet School, and Pam Payne, executive director for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, are here to tell us about an incredible fundraising effort that was made by the student council members at Osceola Magnet. If you'd like to come to the podium, please.
Well, my name is Scott Simpson. I'm the principal of Osceola Magnet School, and I'm excited to share a little bit about what my students at Osceola did. I want to introduce, this is Ms. Alexander, fifth grade teacher and sponsor of our student council. And these are some of our student council members. They weren't all able to come. And let me just say, this is a, they are great examples of Osceola Magnet. Ms. Alexander will be up here someday as a principal of her own school someday. And these students right here are the type of kids that we're moving on to our middle school and high school as well. And I'm pleased to say that some of our former students were in that Storm Grove Middle School band. We're still taking credit for them years later. So this is a wonderful group of kids. They want to do something special this year. They've done a lot of great things for our school. They organized our Student of the Month celebration. Right now, they're working on a service project around the school, painting our school bathrooms with inspirational phrases, and a variety of other things. But they decided this year, for the first time, to take on a fundraising. Now, every month, we do the Casual for the Cause where kids dress up and they can wear something. And we also do our PTA fundraisers. But our students wanted to take on something themselves, and they ran the entire thing, and they chose the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Now, for a normal Casual for a Cause dressing up, we usually raise, as an individual school, somewhere between $200 and $300 that we contribute to the school district. And all of that money combines together with all of these schools for a wonderful donation to a good cause. These students, with Ms. Alexander's leadership, raised over $5,000. And they really did everything. They did everything from sending home boxes and collecting coins. They were going around collecting coins from kids on a regular basis. They organized a full online donation program where friends and family through social media can contribute in different ways. They handed out small prizes as well. And they really encouraged everyone for our Dress Up Day where everyone wore red. That was it for the leukemia? Oh, it was a superhero day. That's right. Because that was our theme, was to dress up in superheroes. So kids got to wear superhero shirts or anything related to that. So anyway, I'm just so proud of these incredible kids and Ms. Alexander. And we have a presentation to give to, this is Pam Payne. She is the executive director of the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and we are presenting her with a check for exactly $5,049.12.
Excellent. If you guys wanted to shift a little bit over this way, we can have all the board members. Okay, everyone just work your way behind the check a little bit. There you go. Make space. There you go. Okay. Alright. Ready? Let's see everyone. One, two, and three. One more. Freeze for your parents. Okay, congratulations. Great job. Just to save you some walking back and forth time. For our next presentation, I would like to welcome Bob Michael, director of our physical plant, and Rob Rizley, sales manager from Florida Power and Light, to tell us a little about an EPA grant that the district received for reducing energy consumption at Vero Beach High School. Bob?
Good evening. The district received $63,140 for our participation in the EPA Building Energy Conservation Grant Program. It's also known as the EPA Act 179D. These funds were allocated for reducing energy consumption at Vero Beach High School through implementation of new lighting systems and new lighting upgrades. The lighting upgrades were designed and installed as part of the performance contract between Florida Power and Light and the school district during the 2016 and 2017 school year. I would like to thank our partners at Florida Power and Light for submitting the design and data that made this grant possible. I'd like to introduce Rob Rizley. He's our FPL representative.
Thank you, Bob. We had the opportunity to partner with the district a few years ago on a conservation project that's netting about half a million dollar savings per year in water, electricity, and operations savings. Great project. In doing that, our job is to try and come up with dollars to help buy down the cost of these projects. As you can imagine, federal grants aren't always the easiest to fit these projects like this. And this was no exception. So we were able to maximize the value of this grant for the District of Indian River County Schools. I'd like to present this check to the district. I don't suggest you go to the ATM with this. For $64,410.
Okay, one, two, and three. Okay, no parents here for this one, right? Thank you very much. Thank you so much. You can sit closely if you'd like to. Sure. I hate for you to have to keep getting back up and down, so. Okay, so our next presentation is the Florida Tobacco Cessation Alliance Award. The American Lung Association has awarded our district with the Florida Tobacco Cessation Alliance Silver Distinction for the effort that has been taken to help our employees break their nicotine addiction and adopt a healthier lifestyle. Tonight, we have Kelly Brunner, Health Promotions Manager for the American Lung Association in Florida, here to present the award, along with Leslie Spurlock, community health advocate in Indian River County, and Mary D. Mercado, coordinator of risk management and employee benefits for our district. If you'd please come to the podium.
Good evening. The Florida Tobacco Cessation Alliance, FCTA, led by the American Lung Association, is comprised of a comprehensive network of groups determined to improve the health of our state. The Alliance works together to raise awareness that tobacco addiction is a chronic, relapsing medical condition, not just a habit or a personal choice, and to advocate for the adoption of comprehensive cessation health plan benefits for all tobacco users statewide. In Florida alone, $19.6 billion is lost annually in healthcare costs and lost productivity. It is estimated that each smoking employee will cost an employer about $6,100 per year. The FTCA award and application process confirms the employer's commitment to helping their employees and families live a tobacco-free life and start on a path to wellness. To reach the silver level status, an employer must provide coverage of five FDA-approved medications proven to help people quit. A minimum of two counseling sessions are offered of at least 30 minutes each without any barriers to access. The School District of Indian County will join about 20 other employers in the state of Florida that have received this recognition from Florida Tobacco Cessation Alliance. And the School District of Indian River County is the first employer in this county to receive a silver FTCA award. So I'd like to, the plaque reads "School District of Indian River County Worksite Wellness Silver Award in recognition of your commitment to employee health, April 23rd, 2019."
Hi, I'm Leslie Spurlock with the Tobacco Free Partnership and Quit Doc Agency. And we have the Tobacco Prevention Grant here in Indian River County. And it's been several years, actually since 2012, that I've been working with the school district. I'm very proud to say that they have a model tobacco-free policy in this county for a school district. There are districts all over the state that have not reached that goal yet. And we did that back in 2014, and we have included the electronic cigarettes in that policy also. So every campus is 100% tobacco-free. We're very proud of this county and everything that they've done and how they've changed their employee benefits to really give an opportunity for all employees to quit tobacco without any barriers. And we're very proud to present this to the school district.
Okay, one, two, and three. Thank you very much. Board members, you may maybe seat it back at the dais for the proclamation, please. Thank you, ladies. We have a very important proclamation tonight. They're all important, but this one is extra important because it's about Teacher Appreciation Week, which is near and dear to my heart as a former teacher in this school district. Teacher Appreciation Week is a week-long celebration in recognition of teachers and the contributions they make to education and society. It is held in the first full week of May of every year and provides an opportunity for students, their parents, and school principals to show their appreciation for the hard work teachers do and the long hours many of them put in. As the summer approaches, please remember that this doesn't necessarily mean that teachers are taking a vacation. One thing to remember is if you really want to get on a teacher's nerves, say, "Oh, well, you get all summer off, right?" We know that's not true. While summer does allow teachers to catch up on doctor's appointments they've been neglecting, and eat their lunches more slowly, and use the restroom whenever they would like, keep in mind that summer is really a time that many teachers teach summer school, attend professional development trainings, complete courses for special endorsements, and set up their classrooms to create an atmosphere that would meet the decorating standards of Disney World. A teacher's work is never finished. It is an honor to have Mr. Ryan Sangren from Citrus Elementary here tonight. He was one of our teachers featured in our Autism Awareness Highlight Video and a Teacher of the Year finalist for our district this year. And he's going to read our Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation, asking the board to recognize May 6th through 10th as Teacher Appreciation Week. Ryan?
Thank you for that. Good evening, everyone. This is a proclamation designating the week of May 6th through the 10th, 2019, Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas it is appropriate that we recognize our teachers for their passion in educating Indian River County's students. Whereas teachers provide our children with a solid foundation and instill in them a thirst for knowledge and the inspiration to excel throughout college, career, and life. And whereas the School District of Indian River County is home to more than 1,200 teachers serving close to 18,000 public school students district-wide. And whereas Indian River County parents entrust teachers to educate and mold their students to become productive citizens and successful contributors to their community. And whereas Indian River County teachers often make many sacrifices as they fulfill their responsibilities both in and out of the classroom. And whereas teachers deserve a gratitude and esteem of students, parents, and our Indian River County community. Now therefore, we, the school board of Indian River County, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing May 6th, 2019 as Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you. Board members, at this time, I need a motion to accept the proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Week.
And make a motion.
Okay. Mrs. Rosario with the first and Dr. Schiff with the second. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mrs. Rosario?
Yes, ma'am. I am, I couldn't be more proud to honor our teachers in this way. It's, it's, I cannot say enough how grateful I am for all of the work and all of the sacrifice that all teachers, all educators in our school buildings, not just classroom teachers, do on a daily basis to ensure that our kids have a safe and healthy learning environment. So thank you all so very much.
Dr. Schiff?
Ditto that, and the notion that we would designate a week as Teacher Appreciation Week really understates all of the other weeks, all of the appreciation. This is, excuse me, not one week, but this is every day of every week of every year how much I personally just want to acknowledge and speak to how grateful I am for the work that you do. Thank you.
Not only that, I'd like to ditto what they said, and also thank you to our employees who also we appreciate very much, and I'd like to say thank you to them and celebrate them as well.
Mrs. Justice?
I think my fellow board members have said it all. Well done, ladies.
Alright, so at this time, we're going to vote. All in favor of the proclamation?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 5-0. It's approved. Thank you.
I hate to do this to you again, but I would love to get a great picture. And I also want to acknowledge that your wife, what's her name?
Lila.
Lila's here tonight, and the reason I want to do so is because it takes a very supportive spouse to be the spouse of a teacher and be waiting at home for those long hours that are worked, waiting for them to come home. So I'd like for you to come up and join Ryan in the picture, too. Ready? Okay, one, two, and three. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ryan, for being here for the proclamation. That concludes our presentation section for tonight. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair, that concludes the presentations.
Thank you. Alright, at this time is our citizen input. First up, we have Mr. Anthony Stewart, and then we have Ms. Barbara Williams.
Good evening. Board members. Doctor Rendell. As usual, I do have some goodies and posts I would like to share with the board. All my time hasn't started yet. Those three minutes are something that we need to. I think I got more of these folders today because I didn't have to spend as much. They didn't charge me as much as they did the last time to make copies. So I think I may have gotten enough.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart, can you make sure you speak into the mic? Thank you.
The sign says that we cannot escape history. And this is something that President Abraham Lincoln said in D.C. summer first, 1862, '82. 16, 1882, 62, 1862, I'm sorry. And when he said this, he was addressing Congress, letting Congress know the importance. He said this one month before he signed the Emancipation of Proclamation. And I think he was trying to alert Congress to the necessity of them being aware of being fair to everybody. The first thing that I gave you all was a contract by Hush Blackwell, an attorney that the school board hired in November 2015. For the sole purpose, I was told, because I asked them, I wanted to know how much money you all were spending in order to keep from abiding by the 1964 and 1994, 1969 court order for desegregation. And this is what they gave me. They gave me this $600,000. Last four years is what you spent to keep from abiding by the D.C. court. The Civil War lasted four years, and there was over 620,000 lives that were taken. I won't even attempt to try to tabulate the many black kids in this county that has been damaged as a result of your unwillingness to abide by that court order. I have also given you a copy of Judge Kathleen Williams' order, which I gotten from the federal courthouse in Fort Pierce myself to try and understand why would this district want to take, alleviate the quota and ratio from that court order. The court order from '94 declared that there should be a proportion of black and minority teachers hired that's comparable to the amount of students. Now, I called, I came and we had a meeting. I met with Mrs. Or. And after I left, I called your attorney. And your attorney informed me that there was no such, there's not a statute that declared that you can't do this.
Mr. Stewart?
You all said, your attorneys say, "In this order, you've got this new order." You say you can be justified in having one black per school.
Mr. Stewart, I do apologize. Three minutes is up at this time.
Okay. Well, and I also have given you a copy of an article by LeBron James, a person who went directly from the pros to the pros from high school. And I want you to see the success that he's had with young black kids, including as far as their reading of them, their math.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
He's not making excuses at all. And he's not, see, if I, if I did, board, get copies of all your videos that you've had, because I know you didn't recognize any blacks doing Black History Week.
I appreciate your input.
And I will, and I'll come and do that and take it for you.
Okay.
Because we're going to try to secretly bother you all as much as we can.
Mrs. Barbara Williams?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to speak on behalf of our bus drivers and our bus monitors. We feel short because we haven't been given a raise in five years. We take care of your children every day, from babies, middle school, elementary, to high school. We are in those baby lives every day. We get up 3:00 a.m. in the morning to do our jobs. We do a very good job with the kids. The kids love us. The parents love us. We want you all to love us, too, and give us what we deserve. Dr. Rendell, you're still the superintendent. You have done great work in this community, in this district. I can attest to that. But for some reason, you don't see the value in your bus drivers and your bus attendants. Encourage your school board to make some adjustments to give us a raise that we deserve. It haven't been, I mean, it has been five years. 23 cents will not please us. We will do what we have to do with that, but we would love to see you make some adjustments and show us that you appreciate the hard work that we do in this community. And we tolerate those kids with a lot of different stuff. I won't go on to say what it entails. The babies, they're crying, they miss their parents. If we can decide to just not come to work, what would those parents do? They have to work. They need their job. I mean, we can just say, "Let's forget it and see what happens." Everybody would be scrambling. We need to be accommodated for the work that we do in this community to help our kids. We make an impact on our kids. They let us know that. The parents let us know that. Why can't you all let us know that? We appreciate what you all do, but we want you to appreciate us, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Cannon? And then up next is Mr. Mike Young.
Good evening. Liz Cannon, IRCEA. On tonight's agenda, there are several budget amendments, and one of those includes an amendment for the insurance fund. I have some questions regarding this. Why is the fund being charged $15,000 with administrative office expansion? Over the past few years, High Tech Committee has worked tirelessly at ensuring that the money placed in the fund serves those participating in the fund. If the district would be responsible for housing administrative offices regardless, why would the fund be charged with this expansion? Is there a corresponding amount in revenues for the district paying for such an expansion? At this morning's budget workshop, it was discussed that the insurance fund was projected to be more than $1 million over the required safe harbor amount. This was achieved not with just the promised $7 million from the district, of which the district only gave $4 million, but with significantly higher premiums paid by participants in the plan and a negative trend in claims. The negative trend could be a result of many things, including people unwilling or unable to go to the doctor due to higher copays from switching plans. The fund is also stronger due to stronger oversight on behalf of the High Tech Committee. We take very seriously any impact upon our fund. The current strength of the fund should not embolden spending that should not be charged to that fund. Another question I have is for the opt-out employees for hospital stays. Again, is there a corresponding revenue from the district? While I know the High Tech Committee is advisory in nature, why were these changes not shared with our committee? This is one of the few committees on which I have served where we truly have made an impact. Please do not let another committee become irrelevant here in Indian River County. There was a great deal discussed today during the budget workshop. I was somewhat disappointed not to have a tentative budget book to see how our district is doing in all areas, but it was very good to hear about the potential funding sources that could be used in negotiations with both bargaining units. The millage proves how much the public supports public education. And if there is a need, IRCEA would be willing to work with the district to continue this millage beyond 2021. Perhaps after a full year has passed since we started this process, we may finally solve some of the issues that have been on the table for more than 10 months. Finally, I was pleased to see a more civil tone in your earlier workshops. It is a poor reflection on our district when those who make the decisions cannot seem to get along. I appreciate the efforts and I hope that it continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Young?
First, I'd like to say how much I appreciate the Teacher Appreciation Week. They don't get enough thank yous. Shout out to my wife. I know she's watching this live. She's actually chairing the Beachland Elementary PTA Teacher Appreciation Week, and today's our anniversary, and she let me come here, so super grateful. I just wanted to come here today and say thank you for allowing everything that we do to go on. For those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Mike Young, and I'm the Director of Operations for Little League Baseball in Vero Beach. Thursday, we had the privilege of presenting to Mr. Carver and his committee that will make a recommendation to the board and to Dr. Rendell about the future lease of Thompson Rotary Fields. We feel that it's a privilege to even present to Dr. Carver because a few months ago, we were, we had nothing and just a dream and a prayer. If everything goes the way we hope and pray that it goes, we look forward to the privilege of being able to deliver to the things that we spoke about in our meeting. We spoke about the history of Vero Beach Little League, 61 years in Indian River County. We spoke about the future plans that we have to renovate the field from what it currently looks like to the state it was in when Little League was thriving here in Vero Beach. These are drastic changes, and I hope that you're able to see the video and the slides that we presented to Mr. Carver. It's my understanding that at your next board meeting, it will be an action item and you will vote. And we pray that you will do, as you do for the school district as a whole, and pay attention to the children that are without a home field and make sure that we're able to give them a home field to play on so that they can have a place to call home. Thank you again, and I look forward to next month.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And tell your wife we said happy anniversary. Okay, Mr. Heimler, I have you for Action Item H. You still want to speak to that? Okay. All right. So that, you'll pass that down. All right, so that ends our citizen input portion of the meeting. We're going to move on to Consent Agenda. At this time, I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Move approval.
Okay, Mrs. Justice with the motion. Dr. Schiff with the second. Mrs. Justice, do you care to speak to your motion?
I would. Thank you. In the Consent Agenda this evening, Item C is Approval of Donations. And I just want to highlight two donations that our district received. First, a big thank you to the Vietnam veterans who donated some table saws, regular saws, some tools to the Treasure Coast Technical College for the Welding Construction Program, as well as some money, and the total value of the donation was $2,100. So thank you to our veterans for their consistent commitment to our students in many different ways. The second thank you goes to the Education Foundation, who has been a committed partner in making sure that we serve our students with excellence and helps to fund the Step into Kindergarten program. That was a $50,000 donation, thanks to a lot of community partners who support that foundation. So just thank you to them for, again, their continued commitment to making sure that students are entering our classrooms kindergarten-ready.
Any other discussion on consent? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0. So we're going to move on to Action Agenda. I did pull the item, Approval of Budget Amendment for the Insurance. That was Consent A. So I wanted to address the question that Mrs. Cannon had brought up, and I was speaking with Mrs. Maricato during the music. So Dr. Rendell, she had given me an explanation for the $15,000 increase for the administrative office expansion. Would you care to speak to that, or would you care if she spoke to that?
I'll have Mrs. Maricato come up to the microphone if she can explain that. The agenda's been published for over a week, and nobody gave me any questions to do any research on. So Mary Dee, can you come up to the microphone? It's my understanding we were expanding our services at the CareHere Clinic, and I imagine that's what these costs are associated with, but I'll let Mary Dee explain.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, the budget amendment was done for the purposes of the expansion at CareHere. As we increase our hours, we need to increase our physical space as well. The timing of it, I apologize for, because we haven't had a chance to review it with High Tech, as Ms. Cannon mentioned. And the reason for that is because today is the last day for our department accountant. She leaves us today to take a federal position, and so I needed the help to make those things happen. I tried to place everything where I needed to be, knowing that I'm going to have a vacancy and how short my finance department is. I tried to line things up so we can continue to move forward. We have lots of things before High Tech tomorrow that we're excited to review with them and bring back to you shortly.
All right, that's, I just wanted some clarification on that, and maybe if you can meet with Mrs. Cannon on that and answer any of her questions that she might have.
Of course. I just didn't get an opportunity to return her call this afternoon. We were doing some other things.
Okay, that's.
Can I ask a question? Can you clarify for me? I heard that you needed to get it moved forward because of the person who's leaving. Does that mean, is there a deadline on voting for it? Or was there a deadline on getting it onto our agenda so that we could see it?
I'm not sure if I can answer you accurately. I might need some assistance there.
Kind of both. I mean, if she was asking the senior accountant to do the budget amendment, it needed to happen before she left, and so this was the board agenda that would fit that timeline. Sounds to me like that's what she was trying to accomplish.
I guess what I'm getting at is if you're meeting with High Tech tomorrow and there's an issue about that, if that specific item weren't voted on, would that be a problem to bring that back after that conversation to a subsequent meeting? Or does this all have to go in a package because there's a particular deadline on it?
I'm going to answer it in two parts, please. One, High Tech has already approved the expansion of the clinic hours. We've already talked about that at the committee level. Until this moment, I didn't realize that High Tech was an advisory kind of board. In my book, they, the sun rises and sets with them. So we'd already gone through that process, determined how many hours it was going to be, what the numbers of personnel are going to be, who's going to do it, and all those types of things. And in regards to High Tech actions, we do have some drop deadlines, and that's specifically to our plan years with our health insurance. So we have to get them through the decision-making process, to get it to you through the decision-making process in time to hit a printer for when our plan year starts again, 10-1. And then we have to have an open enrollment 30 days before, so we literally have a calendar posted where we back into all of this decision-making process to meet our deadline, and this is one of the steps in that process. So I hope I answered the question?
Okay.
Kind of, sort of, no, maybe?
Kind of, sort of, but that's as much my ignorance with the process as it is in wanting to, because I now hear there's some controversy about it, I'm looking for a way that that conversation could happen if there's an issue around it.
Sure.
I just don't fully understand the issue and understand that there hasn't been sufficient conversation about it. So I'm looking for a way to have it work for everybody.
We will look at it in more detail tomorrow at High Tech. We do have a large, long agenda with them. And in the event that it doesn't happen, it doesn't get expended. Is that easy? Does that help any?
Yes.
Okay.
So at this time, I just need a clarification on that, so I appreciate, I appreciate that. I need a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Okay. Mrs. Justice, I need a second. Mrs. Rosario with the second. All right. Discussion?
No, ma'am.
Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Five, zero. Okay, so we are moving on to Action Item A. And Mrs. Berenberg, your item that you had put on there, it will be Action Item, I think it was I.
I.
Okay, so we'll get to it.
It'll be eventually discussed.
Okay. At this time, Action Item A is Public Hearing for Adoption of New and Revised District School Board Policies. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, ma'am chair. This is a public hearing. You've got to open the public hearing script.
Okay. So, this item deals with adoption of new and revised district school board policies. Dr. Rendell, have you documented that this public hearing was properly advertised in accordance with state statutes?
Yes, I have.
Right. We now recess this meeting to conduct the public hearing as advertised. The public hearing is now in session. Dr. Rendell, are there any written responses to the advertised public hearing to be read at this time?
Ma'am chair, we have not received any written notifications.
The public is invited to address this issue at this time. Is there any individual representing an organization or his own personal or public interest who wishes to speak? On the school board policies? No? Okay. The Chair concludes that the announced public hearing on the adoption of the new and revised district school board policies has been conducted pursuant to notice and that ample opportunity to address the issue has been provided to all. The board meeting is reconvened at this time. So I need a motion to approve the revised...
Second.
Okay, Dr. Schiff with the first and Mrs. Justice with the second. Dr. Schiff, would you care to speak to your motion?
No, ma'am.
No?
No, ma'am.
Any discussion?
No.
No? Mrs. Rosario? No?
I just, I want to say thank you to our, our committee that spent the time in, in bringing these revisions back to us. So, so at this time, I'm going to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'm going to move to Action Item B, Approval to Accept Annual Financial Audit Report Number 2018-196 for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Actually, Action Item B and Action Item C are somewhat related. Action Item B is an annual financial audit report that is done by the Auditor General's Office of our overall budget and operations and finance. And then Action Item C is actually an audit that's done by an outside firm of our internal accounts audit. So in Action Item B, we're seeking approval for the audit that was conducted by the Auditor General's Office for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. So these are our books for last school year.
Okay. I need a motion for approval.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Mrs. Justice and then Mrs. Berenberg. Mrs. Justice, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Berenberg?
No, ma'am.
Okay, any other discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Okay, moving on to Action Item C, Approval to Accept Internal Accounts Audit Report for fiscal year to, year that ended June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, ma'am chair. An internal accounts audit for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, last school year, was completed by Berger, Tooms, Elam, Games and Frank. Incorporated within the internal account audit report are the Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control over Financial Reporting. So these are school-based accounts and district-based accounts. We conduct an internal account audit every year and then we react to the findings of the internal account audit. They, and auditors usually find something and so when they find something, then we try to correct our, our practices to make sure that we don't have that same audit finding again. So we're seeking your approval of the internal accounts audit for last school year.
Okay. I need a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Mrs. Justice and Dr. Schiff? Mrs. Justice?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Rendell, I know as school staff changes that there are a number of different policies and procedures that have to be followed with internal accounts. Is there some methodology or some procedure that we have as far as training new employees as they come in so that they can?
We do offer training for the bookkeepers and other administrative assistants who handle the money, so to speak, at the different school sites. The problem is, a lot of times, we'll offer those trainings periodically throughout the year and staff will change and they'll miss the training. They'll have to conduct those different tasks and duties and they may make a mistake because they haven't been trained on certain things. The other thing is, we usually get these audit results in the middle of the year, like January, February, a little later this year, on this specific internal accounts audit. And so if there are some things that we have to fix, you know, train the bookkeepers on something different, procedure that maybe we weren't following properly, we can train them at that point and for the rest of that year, they will have corrected those procedures or practices. But the internal accounts audit for the following year is going to do the whole calendar year. So things that may have been handled improperly prior to that training might still show up in the internal accounts audit. But it is incumbent upon us as the district, the finance department, to offer training to the bookkeepers and other administrative assistants who handle the money.
Okay. All right. Dr. Schiff? No? Go ahead.
I'd just like to say, thank you for saying that. And also, I know we had a discussion about when you see trends. Could we bring that to the, maybe have a little training with our principals as well to look out for those things? Because they are ultimately responsible.
Absolutely, yeah, because sometimes the missteps are directed by administration and maybe the administration don't, maybe they, because they don't get the training. So they maybe don't know the rules of the red book. The red book is kind of the, the state's financial guide that we have to follow.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I did get the training when I was a principal of red book. So may I suggest perhaps we do a little bit of general red book training? Because I think it is ultimately the responsibility of the principal. Bookkeepers do the best they can and they may suggest to a principal that they can't, can't use funds in a certain categorical. However, the principal needs it, they want it, find the money and so they do what they can. So I just think it all relies back on the principal. They need to have that training.
Any other discussion? No? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero. Moving on to Action Item D, Approval to Award School District of Indian River County Number Twelve dash Zero dash Two Thousand Nineteen J.C. Invitation to Bid I.T.B. Fire Alarm Replacement at Sebastian River High School to First Fire and Security, Inc. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Action Item D and Action Item E are related. Action Item D is the, we're seeking approval to award the invitation to bid, or the bid, to First Fire and then in Action Item E, it's the, the actual contract to do the work. So the purpose of the intent to invitation to bid was to secure firm to replace the fire alarm system campus-wide at Sebastian River High School. The total project cost is five hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And so, Action Item D, we're seeking approval to award the bid to First Fire and then when we get to E, it'll be the contracted services.
Okay, I need a motion?
Move approval.
Mrs. Justice and then Mrs. Rosario with the second. Mrs. Justice?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Rosario?
No, ma'am.
Any discussion? That's capital, right? Dr. Rendell?
Yes, ma'am, I, I neglected to mention that this is in the capital budget. This is safety and security, obviously, fire alarms. So it's something we, we will do.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Action Item E, Approval of Owner Contractor Construction Agreement for Sebastian High School Fire Alarm Replacement, School District of Indian River County Number Twelve dash Zero dash Two Thousand Nineteen J.C. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Again, this is now to award the actual contract to First Fire Security, Inc. For the work at Sebastian River High School. It's a total replacement of all the existing fire alarm systems. Again, total cost, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars that you're approving tonight.
Okay. All right. Board members, I need a motion?
Make a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Rosario with the motion and Mrs. Berenberg with the second. Mrs. Rosario?
No, ma'am.
I'd just like to thank staff for getting this in order.
Yes. Okay. Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Okay, so we're moving on to F, Approval for the School Board Members of Indian River County to join the Florida School Board Association from April first, two ninth, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. I put this on the agenda because we had talked about it during our discussion session. This membership is in the cost of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty for the full board. Shall an individual board member wish to invoke seven sixteen dot two two one two Florida statute? The cost would be seven hundred and fifty per board member for the remainder of this year. So what that, what that Florida statute says is, we don't have to join as... We can join individually or we can join as a board. I'd need a motion and then we can discuss it and then we can...
I'll make a motion.
Okay. 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 So I have Mrs. Berenberg with the motion and then Dr. Schiff with the second. So Mrs. Berenberg, please speak to your motion.
Sure. First of all, that statute doesn't exist, so that number, because I looked it up to see whether or not, you know, exactly what the writing said, so I would very clear as to what was going on. It does exist, but I didn't, I didn't find it quickly, but I did ask our board attorney if she found it and she did. So we might want to correct it. It's okay. It's still there. It's just a different number. So...
Doesn't exist?
No, it does exist under a different statute number.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And can I ask Ms. DeAgresta, what number is it?
It's just, the, the numbers were just transposed. It's actually six one seven point two two one and the agenda item just says seven one six. The numbers were transposed.
Six one seven.
Yeah, and the reason why that's important is because the one I looked up was on real estate. So I just want to make sure that we're talking about the right thing here.
We'll have to check that because we, I thought we got that directly off the, the application. Okay, thank you for that.
And also, just curious if you're asking us to, if you're wanting to do this for just the rest of the year to look for an interim superintendent or is this for a superintendent search? I wanted clarity on that.
When we were talking as a board, this is something that not only, I mean, there, it's three-pronged. I mean, if we decide to utilize them, which we've not decided on that, for a superintendent search, if we decided to use them for the interim search and then for the board members to utilize their counsel in, in... Because we can't talk to each other, is to have the professional experts that we can call and just bounce ideas and conversation off of as a fellow board member. So just utilizing their expertise. So there's not a set agenda, why we should join yet. But looking down the road, if we do decide to utilize them for the superintendent search, obviously, there's a, a cost savings for that. And also a cost savings for the interim.
Okay, so then what's the urgency of joining right now? That's, I guess that's my question, is why do we want to join now? Is it because of the interim search? Is that, is that why? Instead of joining for the next school year? Because we don't have the money in our funds right now and our budget. We haven't budgeted it for it.
Right.
So that's why I'm asking.
Well, when I brought it up during discussion and there was consensus to put this on there, the fact that at this time during the obvious, the obvious things that are going on for us to be able to have the FSBA to reach out to and, and just talk to and utilize right now and as fellow board members, we can call them and, and talk to their attorney or we can talk to their consultants, just to run ideas past. That, that was my understanding during the discussion.
Yeah, I do. When it comes to me.
Okay.
So, so you're saying you thought maybe spend three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to be able to talk to somebody?
No, I'm saying that we did talk about, are we going to utilize them for the search, for the superintendent search? We would get a discount for that and also for the interim because that cost typically is five thousand dollars if we utilize them for that too.
Okay.
So...
I just want to hear from other board members and then I have another question. Thank you.
No, and this was something that I, I had brought up as a, and the board had the consensus to put it on the agenda and that, that, you know, as chairperson, I put it on there because I was asked to.
Oh, I'm, I'm not questioning that. I just wanted to know specifically where we... I thought we were talking about doing it for the reason of looking for an interim superintendent. I just want clarity on that.
Well, I think everyone has their own, you know, I can't speak for anyone else, but I think everyone has their own reasoning why they want to join. So I can't speak for the other board members.
That's why I want to hear from them.
Right, okay. Dr. Schiff?
So I'd be happy to speak for myself. Couple things on this. As a new board member, what we've been going through for the last several months has been challenging, it, it would be a kind way of putting it. I have reached out to Andrea Messina, the Executive Director of FSBA, a number of times and she has been not only incredibly generous with her time, she has, she has spent a lot of time on the phone with me, not to tell me what to do, but to put in context what we're doing, to help me sort through and to think through. As you mentioned, we can't talk to each other. And talking to somebody who is not knowledgeable about this doesn't help. Talking to somebody who is knowledgeable about it, who's been a board member, who has done training for board members, who has had experiences with other county, other districts going through what we're going through has been... To say it's been invaluable would be an understatement. She's, she has given me incredibly wise counsel, not from, in any way, her perspective of what she thinks I should do, but she's been somebody I can talk through issues and ideas with. More importantly, she has provided context for how we get through a moment like this. She has resources that I don't think any other organization in the state of Florida has for us to help us with this process. She has resources, both in terms of her experience, in lists that she keeps, in who she has contact with, in ways that she communicates with other districts, that when I get off the phone with her, I feel much better and safer about how we will move forward with this process. And it's, it's happened every time I've spoken with her and I've asked her some fairly specific questions. In light of going where we are and moving forward, I don't think there's better counsel we can get. I really don't. I think that is the best counsel we can get. I think it is also, in light of expenses that we might have in searching for a superintendent, not only the expenses, but the expertise in how we go through the process and who we look for, in getting advice and support on that process. I think they're invaluable. I also think it's worth noting that we are of the sixty-seven districts in this county. We are one of, I think it's two, possibly three, who does not have any board member who is a member of this organization. I think if sixty-four, sixty-five other districts see value in this, it behooves us to consider what they're seeing that we're not and what they're benefiting from that we're not. And in my conversations with her, I become increasingly aware of where they're benefiting and we're not. The counsel that she could have provided during this process would, I believe, have made a difference to our ability to work together on how we move through this process. So I'm wholeheartedly in favor of, of taking advantage of that expertise. And I do believe that in light of our budget conversations and where we are and in light of changes that we've seen in our general fund, this is probably a small price to pay as compared with what we would otherwise be paying as we move forward in both an interim and a permanent superintendent search. So I'm in favor of it.
Any other discussion?
As for what other board members think, that's what I think.
Mrs. Justice? Mrs. Rosario?
No, please go ahead.
I have, I've been struggling with this because I, I have serious concerns with their legislative platform. And so I, for that purpose alone, I have reservations regarding becoming a member. However, I do see the incredible benefit of their expertise in the issues that we've been facing and one of...
And one of the things that I recall, Madam Chair, that you mentioned at our last discussion session was bringing them in for the... To have discussions on an interim, how we move forward with that. I do recall you mentioning a possible date of, I don't know what it was, I think it was the 29th or something like that. I'm not saying that that's the date that you've reserved them for, but I do recall having that conversation. And I do recall you saying that she... Originally, that was going to be free, essentially, but that she had already expended, you know, a lot of council time remotely and so we would have to pay for them to come in for that initial... For that initial consult, essentially, presentation, whatever it is that they would provide for us on that day. If we were to become a member before then, that would be included. Their first visit would be included in that. So this is... I'm just going, talking through what I recall from the last meeting on this in that we would initially begin the conversation at this point because we can't really move forward with anything else on what to do in the event that we need to retain an interim superintendent. So my reservations aside, I do see the benefit. I do see the... I do see that we need them. And so I'm sure you'll have consensus. I'm still on the fence, but I'm sure you'll have consensus.
Did you want to speak?
Just a question. The interim superintendent search, I believe you said, was $5,000. So if we join at $3,750, there's no charge for the interim superintendent search?
That is... My understanding is if we have an interim... If we're not members and have them conduct the interim search, that it starts at $5,000 if we're not members. Now, if we did an elaborate superintendent search, you know, it's basically what we want to add to it. But she had mentioned that they could do a very thorough overall superintendent... Or I'm sorry, interim superintendent search for $5,000 and that's typically what the cost is.
Right, so but if we are members...
If we are members...
How much is that?
It's free to members.
There's no charge for them to do an interim search for us? And then there will be an additional charge to do a superintendent search?
The superintendent search, we briefly touched on that, but my understanding, the superintendent search for members is $25,000. If we're not members, it's more. And that's one reason I wanted them to come in and answer all your questions because I don't want to give you short misinformation.
So I think that is interesting, I'd just like to say, I know Andrea Messina, I have had experience with her. I have attended for the past three years FSBA workshops and built relationships with other school board members for the sole purpose of the fact that we can't talk to each other. And it's been very valuable to have that ability to talk to other board members from around the state about experiences they've had. So in general, joining FSBA for the purpose of that type of work, as Dr. Schiff said, I think is important and I don't... I'm not adverse to it. I do believe that there still will be a cost associated with an interim search, even if we are members. I do not know that the $3,750 is going to cover the cost of the interim search, so I have some concern about that specifically. As far as a full superintendent search or utilizing FSBA, like anything else we do, I'm going to want to be able to look at other options as well. I think that there are a number of different groups that conduct superintendent searches and as a good steward of taxpayer dollars in trying to make sure that we represent all constituents well. I think really the duty is upon us to make sure that we look at all options as we would with any other vendor. And FSBA is a vendor. And so in conversation, when you talk with any vendor, of course, they'd like you to use their service. So I don't know how I feel about this, to be honest with you. I would like to join FSBA on a yearly basis. I would have liked to have said, you know, that we join if it's the choice of this board to do that and to continue to do work as a board, because I do think we have some work to do as a board together, some training, board training or board master certification training. I think that's something that could be beneficial for us as a group, to be an effective team. I'm not adverse to that. I don't necessarily... What this suggestion is predicated on, I have concerns about the fact, because I do think, again, there will be a charge for superintendent search, interim superintendent search above and beyond the $3,750.
Mrs. Sore.
So can I... So it's my understanding that it's typically $5,000 for an interim search, but depending on if... That's a basic search. That's not... You know, it depends the levels that we want to add to that. So yes, if we add on to that, you know, what's not typical, then there would be an additional charge. Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to move to table action item F in order to discuss action item I. And that's why I asked specifically if it was about interim superintendent, because we're looking at incurring a cost now that we don't have in a budget. And so I think once we discuss I, you might have some clarity as to maybe how to proceed with F. So if you don't mind tabling F to after I, then we can go out of order. I'd appreciate it.
Can I go ahead? Couple things. I want to respond to a few things that people said and then I have a question for you. In your concern about the legislative agenda, have you looked at the current legislative agenda? And as I understand it, in the past, your issue was about school choice.
Yeah, that's really the biggest...
Right, and have you looked at their current agenda? Have you read it carefully? And does it represent a position about school choice that you find contradicts your personal perspective?
Let me see how I can... I don't have it in front of me, so I don't want to quote, you know, how it's worded and written, but essentially they're... They have an opposition. They're opposed to, in some way, with funding with regard to... With regard to school choice and charters, essentially. And so I just... I differ with their platform on that particular issue. But like I said, you know, that's a personal preference. You know, I spoke with the person, I forget his name, who is going to be their president or their director, I forget who he is, from, I think he's Osceola County, I believe. Sorry, I'm so close to you. And he is in... Personally, I shared with him my concerns. This was, of course, when we were at the... In Tampa. I shared with him my concerns and I really wanted to know if what I was understanding about that particular item on their platform was accurate. And he said personally, he's 100% in favor of school choice and charters in particular, but as an organization, the organization is not essentially in favor of charters and how, you know, how the charters are the governing factor of it and they're... And something that had to do with their finances right now. But again, right now is not to discuss that, you know, in detail that. Right now, it's... I'm willing, you know, I'm willing to not... I mean, we need this, you know? We need... We need... I need to be able to look at our need as a district and where we are rather than be so, you know, pinpointed on that one particular thing. And I'm willing, you know? I just want to be able to express to you all my reservations, that's all.
Yeah, and I think the school choice issue is very nuanced, so I'd really encourage you to talk to Andrea or other members because I think what gets put in a big box of school choice is far more nuanced than that about what gets supported and what doesn't. But you're right, we don't have to go into it now. On the search issues, I just... I want to clarify, I don't know about the interim search and the $5,000. I just want to clarify, though, that the $25,000, if we were to join, if we were to use FSBA, it's a $25,000 start cost, but that doesn't include assorted other costs for public hearings, for transportation, for identification. So that... I don't want people to get attached to that $25,000 cost because, again, in my conversations with them and elsewhere, it will be higher than that for other costs that are not reflected in that initial $25,000 to hire them. So I want to make sure that there's clarity, we're not looking at $25,000, whether we use them or somebody else, the cost is higher than that. My preliminary investigation of them or other firms is that other firms are higher and may or may not have the very Florida-specific experience that's germane to us and may or may not have that level of depth of understanding of how some of this works specifically in Florida. So if we were to move forward and if we want to consider other firms, that that be a really important part of the conversation, particularly if it's national firms. Is there specific knowledge of Florida, which has some very, very specific rules and specific nuances on what we can and can't do? Lastly, can you speak, Mrs. Berenberg, a little bit? You said you want to table F so we can get to I. Do you have information that you want to present in I that will influence F?
I do, I do.
I want to clarify that you bring new information to the table.
That is exactly why I made the movement. I asked to have a movement to table it and that's why.
Because you have new information that you're going to present us with?
I do.
Okay?
I do.
Okay. All right. So is that the correct term? Table it? I think tables. Is that correct?
Yes. You have a pending motion to table until after action I. It requires a second and a vote?
To table?
Yes.
Okay. So we have Mrs. Berenberg.
I'll second.
Okay. And then, no problem with that?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five zero. So we'll come back to that. All right, so let's go on to action item G. This is... This item, the board had discussed during the April 9th board discussion session to put this on the action item agenda tonight and it's discussion and action on the renewal of the superintendent's employment agreement.
I make a motion.
Okay. For?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to move forward to non-renew Dr. Rendell's employment contract past 2020.
Mrs. Rosario with the motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Dr. Schiff with a second. All right, so at this time, Mrs. Rosario, would you care to speak your motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I don't know if we really ought to engage in further discussion on this item. We have discussed at length in previous discussion sessions, so at this point, I just think we should just vote.
Okay. Mrs. Rosario. Sorry, Dr. Schiff.
Ditto, I agree. We've spent hours and hours and hours discussing this and I don't think we need to more.
I do want to say something. I do want to say something because I haven't said a lot on this. I think at this point, where we are and the conversations that have occurred, I don't think I can support an extension of the contract. And at this point, that's all I'm going to say about that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Justice, do you care to speak?
I do not, thank you.
All right. I don't either. So at this time, no further discussion. We have a motion not to extend the contract beyond June 30th, 2020. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Okay. Is that correct? Mrs. DiAgresta, we did that correct? Okay, thank you. We're moving on to action item H, discussion and action on proposed mutual separation agreement with the superintendent. Again, at the April 9th board discussion session, it was asked that I put this item on for action and discussion tonight. Mrs. DiAgresta, do you care to give us an update? Because I do not see where there's any action to take tonight. So, Mrs. DiAgresta?
Thank you. I understand you have a public comment on this, so it would be appropriate to take the public comment and then I'm happy to update the board. Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. Mr. Heimler, welcome.
Before you start the clock, I had come up here to speak to a couple of items and according to the citizen input, on the lower right-hand side, the board approved the citizen input form that says that you may speak only once about any given item. And I asked Ms. DiAgresta before I started, when I came here, and she said I can only speak to one item as per board policy, but it says the board approved this. So I should have been able to speak to as many items as I wanted to. Your board approved this. Ms. DiAgresta, who's not part of the board, shot me down when I got here. Now, to only speak three minutes when, as everybody says up here, we have families and everything else, is really not fair. You guys approved this form. I came up here to speak to a couple of different items and I don't see how the board attorney overrules the school board who approved this form. So it's pretty clear, it says right there, you may speak only once about any given items. It doesn't say you may only speak once, period. So before you start the clock going, you can shake your head all you want, Ms. Justice. It says it clear and right in form and you voted it on your own. So I have a lot to say and I don't think three minutes is fair when it says you can speak only once about any given item. You guys decide what you want to do. But as far as I'm concerned, I should have been allowed to speak to as many items as I wanted to.
Mr. Heimler, I have you down for H. Would you like to speak?
Correct. But I signed up for G and Ms. DiAgresta said I couldn't speak to G or the citizen input. That's not fair.
So let's go ahead and start for H.
I will abide by the rule tonight, but you guys have a board rule and that's not right.
Yeah, and I'll discuss that.
Fine.
Thank you.
All right, so what the bottom line was, I was expecting a comeback from the school board, from the superintendent's attorney by now. Evidently, that has not happened, or at least we're not going to find that out until after I speak. So I came up with a little advice and I sent some of the board members some emails, which I thought was fair. And I have a nice relationship with the superintendent. I have nothing against the superintendent. We see each other quite often all over town. And as other board members have said, we have a fractured relationship, it's time to move on. I think the superintendent feels the same thing. Now, the first thing I had a problem with was the gag order. I don't think there should be a gag order. Dr. Schiff has had a question about gag orders. I am very familiar with gag orders. I was in court for a long time and the TC Palm roped me up for six or seven times while I ran for the school board. And they were very, very free about my private lawsuit as a... Not private, but as a private citizen, they were very happy to write about me. But if you guys say anything derogatory about that superintendent, for the rest of your lives, trust me, he is going to come after you with his attorneys, whether there's a cease and desist order in there or some sort of general release clause or whatever you want to put in there, it goes on for perpetuity, forever. You guys are liable individually and as a school board for the rest of your lives. That's crazy. So if you want to get sued when you guys speak to somebody else, now that doesn't even exclude the public. So I could say whatever I want, but he's not going to come... He'll come after me, too. So why isn't a gag order on the whole public? I'm not saying I'm going to say anything bad about him, but you'd be crazy to have a gag order in there on yourselves. That's number one. Number two, what is the rush in getting rid of the superintendent? Why does it have to be May 24th, May 29th? You are so far behind as a board. You have done nothing but fight. The newspapers have written all about you guys. Do it 6/28, June 28th. Let him do his job. He's not bad at his job. Let him do his job. Keep him here. Let him do the budget. Let him do the contracts for the teachers. You don't even have contracts for your teachers yet. Let him finish some of the things he needs to finish. Don't rush him out so fast. And as far as the interim and the superintendent search and all that other stuff, open your eyes. And that's about all I'm going to say. Save yourself tens and tens of thousands... and tens of thousands of dollars. There are people in our county that are very, very, very qualified. You don't need to do what you think you need to do. And I think Mrs. Berenberg may be on to that. I'm praying she's on to that. And I think she is, and I wish she would have gone before me, because I think she's already jumped the gun. And I hope she did, because I already did. And I think she's already followed, you know, done what she needs to done. She's done her homework. Now, I have one other thing, two other things. I was at Storm Grove a couple of weeks ago for my son's honor roll. Mrs. Zork was there, and so was Mrs. Berenberg. It took 12 minutes. There were about 50 real A honor rolls out of 1,000 students. That's not good. That's not good. That's what's leading into our high school. That's really bad. It's 5% of 1,000. That's terrible. We need to do better, much better. So as far as performance and graduation rates and all that other stuff that we're working on, we've got to do better.
Thank you, Mr. Heimler.
And that's where I'm going to end for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to listen to Ms. Berenberg.
Okay. So at this time, Mrs. DiAgresta, do you care to give us an update?
Yes, thank you, school board members. I sent you an email, just a brief email, on Friday to give you a brief update. I did have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Stivers about your discussion last Tuesday. And then I also shared some proposed language with Mr. Stivers Wednesday of last week. And I followed up with him last week and again this week. And he indicates that as soon as he has a response prepared, he will provide it to me. And so as soon as I have something in writing, I'll provide it back to you. And then, you know, the chairman can determine an appropriate time for you guys to get together to talk about it.
Okay. So there's no action for that tonight. And if we do get a proposal, I will call for a special meeting if there's a deadline on there, since I understand the will of the board on that. And, but at this moment, I don't think there's any need for discussion, but... Agreed? Okay. All right. So let's go on to Action Item A, I'm sorry, I. Mrs. Berenberg, let me get to my notes. So what that was. Action Item Intern Superintendent Selection. Mrs. Berenberg, can you please explain what type of action you're wanting to take with that?
Sure. First of all, can I make a statement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think right now, what we need is healing. I think that there has been a lot of talk about bad blood, us not getting along. We need to heal. And the superintendent needs to heal, and we need to heal as a community. And I think we need to find a person that knows us well, that can step in and run with it, and not just babysit our district, and not just keep us stagnant, and not just make us fall backwards. We need somebody that knows us, knows us well, is current on what's going on, and can keep our staff, our key staff here. I'm worried about that, too. I'm worried about mass exodus. I've seen it before. I was part of it. And I don't want it to happen. So I have been speaking to somebody that I think I would like the board to consider. It would save us some money. It would put us in a position that we could make this decision about, going with FSBA for the superintendent's search, and give us a little bit of relaxing time. This person, I think, would allow us to work with the superintendent on whenever he decides or we decide that he is going to part ways with us, that would be a smooth transition. And so I'd like to be able to give you a resume, if I could. Chair? Okay. That's for our attorney. Dr. Peggy Jones has been a valuable employee in this district for years. She has lived in our community for, I won't say how many years, but she told me, and it's a few. I personally know her because I coached her daughter in golf, but that's not how I know her the best. How I know her the best is she was my kid's principal. And I was so impressed with what I learned from her, just as a parent at that school. But then watching how the employees speak about her, how the community speaks about her, I was just impressed with the fact that people were afraid that, you know, why did she leave? And she hasn't had that opportunity to talk about that. And she also doesn't want to step on any toes. That's why she's not here tonight. She is a person of integrity. She's a person that can lead us from the minute she walks in that office and runs. I think she has a lot of respect, and I think I support her totally. And I wish that you would at least consider her. We could save money on an interim search. We could have a person that could work with the superintendent to have a seamless transition. And I think that she would add a lot of value to what we're already doing here and move us forward.
Have you, and you said you've already talked with her?
Yes.
And she's willing?
She is.
Okay. I have a phone call in to her, and I've not received it back.
There's a reason. I think that when you talk to somebody as a board member, you want to make sure that no two board members are having conversation with someone.
Right, right.
So I have been speaking with her for about two weeks.
Okay.
And asked her to please have one conversation with one board member, just because I don't want that to be said that we were having other conversations.
No, absolutely. I appreciate that. No. So, so we have an action item. I guess to discuss it, we need a motion. Is that correct, Mrs. DiAgresta? This is the first time I remember having one of these.
Yes. Typically, that you need a motion, some sort of motion for action, a second, and then you discuss it, you know, whether you take action on that particular motion or it gets amended to something else is within your purview.
Okay.
But that's the typical way that you handle it.
Okay. So Mrs. Berenberg can make the motion, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I guess the motion would be to consider going into negotiation with her as an interim superintendent.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay. So, Mrs. Berenberg, do you care to speak any further to that?
I'm not sure of anyone else and what they know about Dr. Jones. Seeing that she was last employed in our district a year ago, she knows our staff. She knows our strategic plan. She knows what we're working on. You know, we've had some conversation, not a lot about specifics, but we've had some conversation about how we can heal and how we can move forward. And I think she's the right person for us to do that.
Okay. Mrs. Dostis?
I second it for the purpose of discussion. I have not had any conversation with Dr. Jones about stepping in as an interim superintendent. It was my understanding she retired, that she came out of retirement and took the job as the Executive Director of Secondary Education, and then she did resign again. I am not completely clear as to the reasons why she chose to resign again, but I know that she had chosen to retire originally. So I don't know that I would be comfortable in voting going forward at this moment, because I've not had the opportunity to speak with her. This is a big decision, and I had stated before that I was comfortable with moving forward in a, with FSBA or another group to find an interim superintendent that would be able to come in and kind of lead the district. And I think I see a benefit for someone having relationships, and I think I see a benefit for someone not having relationships. So again, this is a new idea, and it's something I generally don't like to move forward on something right away, if it's not something that I've been able to give some thought about, especially something as important as this. But again, this is a decision we need to move forward with as a board, and I'd like to hear from my fellow board members about it.
Okay. Dr. Schiff?
I do have some thoughts about this. And Dr. Jones, if you're watching, I've heard only great things. Really, I've never heard anybody say anything negative about Dr. Jones. I don't dispute anything that you're saying about her at all, and I want that clear. Like Mrs. Justice, I'm not clear of a couple of things. One, that Dr. Jones is the only local candidate. I think there may be other local candidates who may or may not be interested. But kind of more importantly, I actually concur with Mrs. Justice on this, that I'm not sure, that I completely agree with you about the need for healing and the need for somebody to be in the position who people trust and like and respect and all of that. I also, though, feel the need for somebody who has really solid experience as a superintendent in another district, who has worked with districts in the position that we're in, in the role of superintendent, has worked with boards in the role of superintendent, who knows how to engage in and massage that process in a way that can help carry us forward. So I'm not yet convinced that it's necessarily better internal or external, and I'm not convinced that, without further discussion, that this is the only local or internal person who might be appropriate. But I'm not ready to make a decision. I'm not at all ready to make that decision on that person. I'm confused about something, too, though, is I'm wondering, because we can't, we can't talk to each other, why it would be inappropriate for different board members to talk to a particular candidate for exactly the same reason that you did? Like, why would I not want to have that conversation with her as well? Likewise, there's other person or people that I might be exploring, but I would never say, don't have another, I wouldn't want that person not to have a conversation with another board member, because another board member may have a set of questions that are equally important, or a different set of questions. So I'm a little confused about that.
Be happy to answer that.
Yeah, maybe you can explain that. But I'm not, I think I've made it clear at this point that I don't, I don't jump on things without, without really considering a variety of implications of that to the best of my ability. So I wouldn't be ready to necessarily move forward with this particular candidate, or necessarily to rule out the possibility of an experienced superintendent coming in to help shepherd us through some of this process.
No, I do appreciate, I do appreciate, because we have to be very, very careful not to accidentally have someone that could be perceived as being a conduit of information. So I do appreciate safeguarding us.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I don't know if there's any rule that says that person can't talk to two of us, or three of us, or four of us, but I do appreciate the fact of not even putting ourself in the situation to even have the perception that there's some type of...
True, but I can't vote on somebody who I can't talk to.
Right, right. And I don't think she's, she's asking for us to vote on this tonight. She's asking for us to consider. Is that correct?
That is correct. And what I'm asking, I'm not asking for your vote tonight on her. What I'm saying is, and that's why I went back and forth about whether or not to make this a discussion item or an action item. But because Action Item F was on there about spending money for an interim search, I wanted to be able to insert this as a discussion before we decide to spend money on an interim search, when we have people in our community that can step up. I think one of my biggest concerns is mass exodus. I am very concerned about our staff and keeping our key staff here. And you need to make that a big consideration when you're talking about who's going to lead us in this interim, because you might say, oh, well, you know, let's do a search, and let's find somebody, and nobody knows them. They're going to be like, I can't take that chance. Now's the time to go. I'm going to go. But if they know the certainty, they know who's going to come in, that's a little different decision. What I'm asking, I didn't want you to not talk to her. I didn't want exactly what you're saying. I listened very carefully about sunshine law and about having a go-between. And I told her, you know, if you get a call from another school board member, please just don't return the call until I bring your name up. And then feel free to talk to anybody you want. So right now, her name is out there. I encourage you to call her. She would have come tonight had she not had that much respect for our superintendent and for our discussion here. I think that there are other people, I think, that could fill those shoes. I think that the reason why I think, and I had long thoughts about this, believe me, I did, because there are some other people that I know that could probably step in here and do this. However, I know she's a known entity, and I know she's done quality work in our district, and I know she's been in our district within the last year. And I think that she can lead us through what we've got to do. So I encourage you to call her if we want. She will come in and speak to us as well.
Okay. Mrs. Rosario, do you care to speak, or no? It's okay. You don't have to.
I have been in, I don't know anything about Dr. Jones. I don't know, I don't know her experience. I see her extensive resume. It looks very impressive. I don't know if I can speak to her directly. I do appreciate and respect Mrs. Berenberg's opinion on Dr. Jones. I have someone else in mind that I have already been talking with. And at this point, I'm not sure if this is the opportunity to bring it up.
I don't, honestly, I don't think we should be bringing up names at this point.
No, that's why I didn't. But here's my thing. Becoming a member of FSBA at this point would actually help us understand when Andrea Messina or whomever else comes in, we can actually figure out, you know, what the process is now. So for example, Mrs. Berenberg already had this conversation. Is it appropriate for us to call the possible candidates? Do we have the candidates come in and interview, or, you know, have an informal conversation with all board members collectively? You know, how does that work? How do we kind of sift through the possible candidates for interim? You know, that's the kind of thing now that, though I appreciate the, the move to avoid using someone or having someone be a conduit for information, though I appreciate that, and I know that that's out of caution to make sure that we all, you know, do the right thing. To a certain extent, I, that's the kind of, that's the kind of question that I would ask Andrea to kind of lead us through, because I'm not sure that would be used as a conduit. But I can understand the perception of that. Still, so I don't have anything that I, you know, I actually pulled up here the job description for a superintendent.
Can we? I feel like we're getting off. So here's, here's what I'm thinking, is that we, it sounds like you have someone in mind that you would like to see apply. Obviously, Mrs. Berenberg has someone in mind. Dr. Schiff might have someone. But if we were to utilize the FSBA and have them put their resumes with the FSBA and have the pool of all the candidates that would like to look at interim, that is how I had seen that this might work. You know, not only are we looking at our local candidates, but, I mean, our local candidates are going to cost the same amount that, as our other candidates. So maybe this might be...
It wouldn't cost us $5,000, though.
But we're not going to pay $5,000. We're, we're going to, we're utilizing the FSBA for other reasons outside of just the interim. You know, to me, I see it three-pronged if we decide to use FSBA for the superintendent's search. But this is a process that we, even for interim, we can't allow HR to handle this. This is something that we need...
To do ourselves.
I'm not doing it. As chair, that's not something that the chair does. That's not something that the board does, you know, taking the applications like that.
But, there's, one of the conversations, and I believe it was with Mrs. Messina at some point, quite honestly, I can't remember where I received this information, but at some point in the discussion of who would be interim, one of the, one of the things that we would have to agree on is how to handle applications. Do we... Do we want those applications to go through HR or do we want them to come to us? And if we want them to come to us, how does that work? And so I would prefer to ask Andrea to come in and kind of answer these questions for us because we need to know. We need to... We have so many questions. To go ahead and vote someone in, consider someone and vote someone in without the possibility of vetting others, unless we were completely unanimous on a particular candidate, I don't know if that would be the wisest thing for us to do at this point.
Can I comment on that? I think we still need someone to do our negotiations for salary compensation. We need someone to do negotiations on job description. I don't think we should be doing that. Go ahead.
Can I ask our attorney what her role is in this? Would she... Has she been involved in that? Because I know I've been involved in another district that didn't seek an outside counsel for an interim. So that's what I'm asking.
And it's really up to the board, but in previous... For previous school board clients that I've been involved with this sort of thing, I was involved with one search where all of the resumes came to my office and I maintained a database and distributed copies to board members and to the PIO. I think it was twice a week was the schedule that was established, that twice a week I would distribute whatever was received in. So that I had... I maintained the database outside of the district offices for that particular search. I was involved with another superintendent search where all of the applications came into the district office and a staff person was assigned to maintain that database and distribute the information that was received to the board members and to the PIO on a periodic basis. I think it really is up to what you're looking for. I don't... I have worked with FSBA on a couple superintendent searches. I don't believe they will receive the resumes or the applications. I believe they require, you know, somebody else to receive them. I don't think they will receive them in. But, I mean, that would be part of your discussion is your process. Where will they come in? What's your deadline? When does board members want them? You know, I've worked with a board where they said, you know, "At the end of the three-week period, give me the whole batch at once." Because they don't want the dribs and drabs to come in. They want the whole bunch to look at all at once. So it really depends upon what you would like to do.
And the reason why I bring it up now, one is because we're looking at spending that money. That's the only reason why I brought up a name. I really wanted to hold that name. But I felt like, you know, and I did have this conversation with our attorney about it. I felt like, you know, at what point do we start talking about this? Because if we're going to have an interim, you know, and seeing that we have to have long discussions, how long is it going to take us to come down to a name that we're going to be able to put in place on the day we need that person? So that's my concern, is that we should be starting this process since we've been having this discussion, at least to get the ball rolling as far as having names. That's all.
Yeah, I agree. All right. So I'm not... I don't see any action, Sydney.
Well...
I mean, we can vote on it, on moving...
You have a motion and a second.
Okay. So the motion was to look at Dr. Peggy Jones as an interim and consider her application.
Yes.
Okay. And that means... I'm just trying to clarify. So that means if we do utilize FSBA, that we would go that route with her and consider her that way through FSBA and the collection of the...
Again, I'm offering another way of doing this without spending the money. What I'm saying is that... Let me... Maybe I can change my motion?
But I'm okay with considering her.
No, I know that. But what I'm saying is maybe the motion could be to consider taking in resumes and going through our attorney that way. That's... I'm just... I'm looking at... I understand you want to go through somebody and the process and everything else. I'd like to look at who we have in house and if we come to an agreement or not. And we can say, "Yes, we have some people here that we think we can use." You know, why spend all that money going out there and looking for national search and turn around and getting somebody right here?
Can I... As I recall, I believe the wording of the motion was to enter negotiations with Dr. Jones, which is different than considering her or is her name going to be in the hat. Entering negotiations is at a different stage of the process and I believe that's the negotiation, the motion as it was worded.
That's why I said I can reword my motion.
So...
Yeah, I'll withdraw it.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay.
Can I make another motion? I'd like to make a motion that we consider, instead of spending the money on the interim search, is that we collect maybe resumes of people that we have in our community or that we know or open it up for resumes to look at and we come back together as a board and say, "Yes, we've got some quality people here. I think we can vet this," or, "No, we need to go with a search group." I'm just concerned right now that we're looking at spending more money that we don't have in any... We don't have a budget in the board. We'd have to move money into our board budget. So I'm okay with discussing joining for next year and going through and doing all those things, master board training, all those things. I just think that right now, I'm concerned about spending money, $5,000 for an interim superintendent search.
All right. So that's... We have a motion on the floor? Do I have a second? Okay.
I'll second for discussion. I mean, we can discuss this quickly. I have a concern, and it's not Dr. Jones withstanding. So I'll second. May I speak to my second? Thank you. It has nothing to do with Dr. Jones or anyone else. I think that the purpose of utilizing an outside search form is to be able to have some perspective, as Dr. Schiff has said, that is a little bit larger and more experienced than ourselves in analyzing whether that person would be appropriate for this time and place where we find ourselves. So while Dr. Jones may be someone that this firm may say, "Yeah, absolutely, this would be a great candidate for you to use going forward," I think just to be responsive to our community and to be respectful of the process and what an important position it is, that I'd like to have that... I would like to have some outside counsel in selecting someone to, you know, lead us, whether it's for two weeks or two months or, you know, a year. I don't... We don't know how long a superintendent search will take. So I second it for discussion. I don't know that I'll support that this time because I still would like to see us utilize a... I would like to have some counsel going forward in helping us to make sure we're making really good decisions in finding a superintendent that's going to meet all of our needs. But I respect the fact that you did this and I thank you for your... For being so proactive and for wanting, having, you know, wanting to take care of the district. And I don't disagree that perhaps Dr. Jones might be an excellent candidate.
I agree. Go ahead.
I'd also like to say, I understand that, again, I don't know where the money's going to come from. So we need to talk about that. But I also would encourage you to listen to staff in our community. And if there is quality candidate out there that people want to put forward, please let us know or comment on what, you know, I brought forward. So I really feel like we need to listen and help our community heal.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So we're going to vote.
Mrs. Barrenborg has a motion for us to consider Dr. Jones's for the interim.
No, I reworded it.
You reworded it? Okay. What was the third wording?
I think... I don't remember exactly, but I think it was to the point where I'd like to enter into maybe opening up... Allowing us to accept resumes and looking at what's out there.
Okay, sorry.
And I did, you know, I understand Ms. Justice would like to go through another party. I respect that and I understand that. I'm just concerned about, again, I'm concerned about our staff.
Thank you. And then we had Mrs. Justice with a second for discussion. So at this time, I'd like to take a vote. All in favor of Mrs. Barrenborg's motion? All in?
I'll say aye.
Okay. All right. So I... One to four. Four opposed. Okay. All right. Thank you for bringing that up. I know it's not always fun to be the one, but thank you for proposing that. I'm going to move on, go back to... Let's see. What's that? Item F? Action Item F? Proposal for us to... And so this is the proposal for us to join as a board or we can join individually. And if we join individually, it's 750 per board member. So I have Mrs. Barrenborg made the motion and then I have Dr. Schiff who seconded. And we have spoken to our motions, but is there any more discussion on this?
I'll speak to this quickly. I don't think that we know what the cost is going to be to engage FSBA for an interim superintendent search. And so if the reasoning for joining FSBA is to utilize them for a superintendent search and what I'm hearing is that perhaps there won't be a cost for an interim search, again, I find that hard to believe right now, honestly, Mrs. Zork. I just think that there's going to be some cost associated with it. And I think that... So I don't... I, in general, support joining FSBA, but I don't really support joining it in this manner. So this is a hard one for me. I feel like we're conflating a lot of different issues together and it's difficult to make, you know, separate judgments on them.
Can I respond to that?
Go ahead.
My interpretation of Mrs. Zork's bringing this up now, though she can speak for herself, but is that the issue has been forced by our current needs to start talking about an interim superintendent and a superintendent search moving forward. But that's not the only reason why we might want to join FSBA. By joining it now at the end of the year, we're kind of testing out. We're kind of seeing, is this an organization that we find benefit in being a part of? I can say unequivocally... That word. Unequivocally that I have benefited from my conversations, not simply about this, but when I've had trouble sorting something out and I need to think carefully about how I want to move forward with a particular issue. She's given me very wise counsel. I'm at the point where I feel like it's unfair and disrespectful of me to continue doing that and benefiting from the fact that others are paying for this service. And she and the organization, because of their commitment to great school boards around the state generally, won't exclude me because I'm not a paying member. Rather, she'll have conversations with me because her commitment is to having school boards that work. But I've backed off from that recently because I don't feel like it's fair for me to keep doing that. This provides an opportunity for any of us and I encourage everybody on the board to have conversations with her. She gives wise counsel. You may or may not think that or have that experience, but I think it's bigger than just this issue. I think it's bigger than just the interim superintendent or the superintendent search. I think it's a way for us to understand moving forward, do we see sufficient benefit that when we start talking about the budget for next year, this is something that we would actually want to engage in because it's given us that much benefit? I don't think we know that right now. And I think this is a fairly inexpensive way of starting to explore that in a moment when we need that kind of counsel.
If one board member joins for $750, does that allow for the discounted or free rate of... I have a responsibility... I mean, you know, Mrs. Barrenborg brought up a good point tonight. I'm not going to say that, you know, $3,750 for us to be able to work better as a board isn't a fair price to... I think it probably is. However, I do know that this money would come out of the board's budget and there is no money in that budget line. So that's definitely, you know, a concern that we would just need to know that we're going to have to amend the budget so that the board budget can, you know, take on this cost. But, Mrs. Zork, do you know if one member is... If one board member is a member of FSBA, does the district then get to utilize the services in the same manner as if the whole board was a member?
I did not specifically ask that question. Did you ask that?
I've asked that about other things.
Okay.
And I don't want to misquote because it was a while ago I had those conversations. And the responses, I recall, was kind of like, "It's kind of cheating." It's like saying, you know, that if we try and get the most benefit for the least amount of money, which in general is our job, certainly, but in this, it's kind of like we're saying, "Well, instead of giving you the money for all of us, could we just have one person join but still get all the benefits?" And I think that's disrespectful to them as an organization and the service they provide.
Fair enough. I don't disagree.
Okay. All right. So we need to take a vote on this and if you choose to not...
I didn't get to speak on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I'm really having a hard time voting for something when we have no money in the budget for it. So had we discussed this item when we were talking about budget, moving money, and we had the money sitting there, then I feel comfortable that we had budgeted for that. But before I walked in, there was no money in a board budget. So we've talked about this, is that nothing was put there for us to be able to do this except for attend Tampa conference. That's it. So I have a really hard time spending money where money isn't.
Madam Chair, may I? Dr. Rendell, would it be possible to move money from, I don't know where, into the board's budget to cover this cost for us? Amend the budget for this purpose?
Anything is possible. I mean, but the money's going to come from another account, you know? So probably out of either the general fund, fund balance or we would have to take it out of another account that, you know, was probably budgeted to be spent on something else.
Can I... Okay. So it's very difficult not having a CFL to go to and ask these specific questions. And so don't... Don't... It's my understanding, and I could be wrong on this, but I believe we moved $15,000 over during the time of the investigation for legal for... Into the board budget to cover legal cost of the investigation that we had with... Is that Sniffin and Spelman?
Mark Logan? Are you talking about Mark Logan?
Yes, Logan. And I believe we ended up using $6,000 or $7,000 of that. So there was that, that extra. My understanding that we had, we have that. Is that your understanding, Dr. Rendell?
I'm not aware of that. I know that we did have to move $1,500 into the board budget to pay for all the printing costs. That wasn't in the budget before. I do know that.
Okay.
So those are two quite different numbers.
Well, it's two different... That's two separate...
Okay.
Yes.
So are you for sure that we have that money in there?
I'm not exactly for sure, but that's what I said. We don't... I don't have the person here, but I know that, you know, it's... The funds are there and if this is a priority, that we get it right, then we have to... We have to invest in this. This is an investment because in the long run, it could save us money that we get it right this time. And we don't try to nickel-and-dime ourselves and we end up making a lot of rookie mistakes that we don't need to be making.
Well, can I add that? We went through a whole budget process today where there was lots of money in lots of different places that we talked about whether or not that would be possible to move into the general funder elsewhere. Unless I'm misunderstanding how that process works, I'm... It seems to me that $3,700 out of the $11 million that we're looking at is not out of the question and that there are other things that have not been... And that there are other things that have not been expended for the year, that wouldn't necessarily be taking money away, that there was money budgeted for certain things that clearly will not be spent, and will not harm anyone, that won't be spent by the end of the year, that it would not be out of the question, and it wouldn't be a hardship on anybody to move some of that money into this money for exact, for the reasons that you're stating.
I think that if we're going to look at joining as a board, in general, it would be advantageous to have everyone feeling that they're a part of that. And I hear Mrs. Barrenborg saying that she has some concerns about the fact that we haven't allocate, we haven't identified money that can be allocated to be used in this manner. So perhaps we could postpone this action item until the next board meeting, which I believe is May fourteenth, and at that point, it could be brought forward again with a funding stream that we've identified could support the membership.
I, Madam Chair. Go ahead. I appreciate, um, the thought, the proposal on that. Um, I just think that we keep postponing things, we keep moving things off, I mean, what are we gonna do in May? You know, we haven't even received a proposal back. If he still proposes that he wants to leave at the end of May, I mean, that's not gonna give us enough time to actually get, become a member, get FSBA in, have these discussions, receive, you know, information as to all of the do's and don'ts, the checklist, receive the resumes. I mean, we're still gonna be backed up. I just think we need to move on. We need to move forward. I feel like we keep backtracking. You know, I feel like we keep going in this hamster wheel, because I, I, and I understand and I respect Mrs. Barrenborg's concern, but we have the money somewhere. I'm sure we have, we just look, we just identified eleven million dollars today that was not spent, that we agreed that Dr. Rendell was going to look at each of those items and kinda figure out, you know, how much of that are we going to be really, essentially spent between now and the end of the school year? Um, and not to mention, a couple of weeks ago, it was identified that we had, you know, more money that was put into, uh, you know, a category that it really wasn't supposed to be, so we, we have it, we just have to identify it and put it in. And if we vote on it now, Dr. Rendell will make it happen. I don't doubt that he wouldn't.
And to add to that, I'm a little concerned, I'm, I'm a little concerned that if we get another letter and we call another special meeting, again, we're jumping from crisis to crisis without having resolved how we're gonna move forward. I think we need to be in control...
Absolutely.
...of this, and how we do it, and how we wanna move forward, and not simply in the position of being defensive and responding every time something else is put on our plate. So, I, I, I hear Mrs. Barrenborg's concerns, I appreciate them, I appreciate everybody's sensitivity to those, and to our wanting to work together in a way that the entire board is comfortable with. But I'm concerned, as, as is Mrs. Rosario, that if we keep putting things back, that we're constantly gonna be jumping from one thing to another, and, and never actually take the lead on how we want this process to go. How do we want this to go? What do we think is important moving forward? I'm concerned that if we don't have somebody helping us also, and we start taking in resumes, I don't know what the process for that is, and I don't know that without the benefit of, of, of some counsel that's been through this process before, that can help us understand what we're looking for, and what are some things we need to identify moving forward. I don't wanna find ourselves in a pickle, because we haven't done this thoughtfully and methodically and systematically.
Madam Chair, I move the vote, please.
Okay. Um, just can I make, I'd like to make one comment. If we do move in this direction, Mrs. Messina said that she is available, she's gonna be traveling from Tallahassee to Miami, I believe she's going to Miami, and she could stop on her way on April twenty-ninth, Monday, and she could be available from ten to twelve, if that's what the board wishes.
Was that a, a recent conversation you had with her? 'Cause I don't know if some stuff shifted, but, um, I'm just looking at the twenty-ninth. Oh. I mean, it...
The recent conversation?
Yep.
Um, let me see, I sent her that email on, this was after our discussion on Tuesday, so I sent her that email on Tuesday night, and she responded Wednesday, so that was, the latest response was on Wednesday. So, she, she did offer to come here, because she is on her way down, down south, so that was the only date that she really has available coming up. So anyways, with that being said, are we ready to take a vote on this? And, and, um...
Well, are we voting on the April twenty-ninth, because is that a Monday?
Well, we don't need to vote on that...
Okay.
Yet, that can be consensus, but what we need to do at this time is vote as a member, as a board body to join FSBA, or are we wanting to join individually? So, at this time, um, the motion is to join as a, a board body, and that, that cost to the district is three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, the vote is for that. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. So, my understanding is that, um, well, we have, we have three that, that would like to, but this has a special clause in it, so if you do not, as a board member, want to join, you have that right not to join.
Mrs. Zork?
Yes.
Um, you just asked for a motion in a second and took a vote on the board, joining all together, and you had three votes that were yeses, so I would imagine that would mean at this point now we are joining as a board.
No. Mrs. DiResta, that's not... Yeah, the, um...
Mrs. Zork, the statute that you referenced in the agenda item says specifically that if a public official elects not to join the membership association, then the dues assessed with regard to that public official shall not be paid. So, at this point, it's three, it would be, what is it, seven fifty times three, whatever that number is, is, is what's been approved tonight. The others have not agreed to join.
Okay. Exactly, so, do you...
No, my understanding was that we were voting to join as a full board. Out of respect for Mrs. Barrenborg and her concerns regarding the budget, I chose to vote with her, because I do recognize and respect her concerns. I, I do also recognize that trying out a membership and having all board members have access to the same information is valuable as well, and I would hate that we would have a meeting on April twenty-ninth regarding a possible superintendent search, and perhaps two board members who weren't members wouldn't be able to participate in that conversation.
No, you could participate.
It was shared this evening that if all members don't particip, I mean, I'm ki, I would imagine we would be paying the full membership, the full, I, I think there are a lot of gray areas as far as what the interim superintendent search will cost and membership regarding that.
Okay, I don't know why we're making this so difficult, because they're willing to come, they're willing to answer every single question that everyone has, and we're trying to hypothetically guess at what, what they would do or wouldn't do, when they've already said many times they would come and talk to us. At this point, if you do not, as a board member, want to join, by Florida statute, you do not have to join. I have three board members that would like to join, I have two that I'm trying to get clarity, do you or do you not want to join?
I would be comfortable joining, I, I, again, I asked to postpone the vote just so that we could join, we could be together as a board in making this decision. Um, any work we do going forward with FSBA, especially with master board training or any of those things that we might be able to utilize, it's going to be important that we work as an effective team together and respect each other in that.
Okay, so how does this sound? I asked the FSBA to come based on the three members, have the two members come, and after they come, if you decide to join, then you can join at that time. How does that sound, the next business meeting?
Mrs. Zork, I have a concern that we're saying all the time that we're jumping at other people's agendas and other people's time and everything. If we're only being offered April twenty-ninth, ten, ten to twelve, and that's why I asked if that's a Monday, um, that is not a good time for me, and I wanna be involved in this. And I think if we're gonna join as a board and be cohesive team, then I think we need to respect the fact that we shouldn't jump it, at the fact that she gave us that two-hour window.
What, what day would you be available?
In the evening, I, I'm telling you, this is crunch time for testing. Mondays, I do, I seriously work with kids all day long for testing. And so, that's why I stay away from Mondays.
I could see on their way back, if they could do it evening...
Sure, that would be great.
And I'm, I'm...
I'd be all for it if I could do it in the evening, and we can afford it.
We have, on the twenty-ninth?
No, on, so she's on the, on the...
On the twenty-ninth, there's...
On the thirtieth. She's down south, so maybe the, the next day on her way back, that evening, I could see if she's...
The next day would be the first.
No, the next day is the thirtieth.
No, she's, she's down south on the thirtieth.
She's down south on the thirtieth, she would come back on the, you're, you're gonna see if she's available on her way back on the first.
I'm available on the first.
Yes.
Available on the first. Anytime.
Me too.
I'll have to look, I don't have my schedule.
Okay. So, at this time, it's my understanding, we have three board members that do wanna join right now. I will try to arrange the Monday evening, or, I'm sorry, the Wednesday evening, the May first. Um, do we have a second date if that one does not work?
I, I feel the need to express something here, and the last thing I wanna do is have more board contention, 'cause I, I think we're moving towards working better, but I'm, I'm, I'm kinda having some trouble with we can only work at night, and how we can work around that.
I didn't say that. I said Mondays, I, I work with students all day long, and it's testing time. We have test in two weeks, I'm trying really hard to get them ready. So, that's why I asked to not do it during that April twenty-ninth, ten to twelve.
So, are there any other times, um, not in the evening, that you're available?
Yeah, in the afternoon's fine.
So, Monday the first, so, so if she were available coming back up on the first, on, on that day...
Could we just agree to get maybe some options of dates, and then go through Nancy and, and work out what's best for most of us? And, and I'd be fine with that. And even if I have to Skype in, if we can work that out, that's great.
Okay.
I don't wanna hold us up for that reason. What I'm asking is not to do it April twenty-ninth from ten to twelve.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, well...
And, and again, I'm, I'm just curious why we're going through this one organization to look at this interim search, and I just wanna say it one more time, because, you know, we're, we're all saying that we don't wanna jump on something, and yet, we're also saying that we don't wanna postpone anymore, and so I've heard this back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth, you know, let's pick something and go with it. So if we're gonna do this, let's go with it. 'Cause I've heard you say, well, we're not quite sure if we wanna go with it. So, if we're gonna do this, and we're gonna talk to her, and we're gonna discuss how to go about the interim superintendent search, I wanna know, how much is that gonna cost us? And I think that we need to know that number before she comes here.
I'm ready to become a member tonight, so, it's, I have two other board members that are also, seems like they're in consensus. Not only do we need to ask them how much is the, how much this is, but we also need to talk to them when they're here about the process for the, the superintendent search, and how much do we foresee that cost, costing the district? So, I mean, there's so many reasons why we need to have them come in. So, I mean, we've, we've been talking about this since the beginning of April, and I don't understand why nobody's, I, I, I appreciate that you've, you've called them, but everybody should be doing their own homework, and it's not just the chair's job to do this whenever it was consensus during the, the, the discussion session, to put it on the agenda tonight. Yes, my name's on there, but it was consensus that we put it on there. So I, I feel like, you know, as a board, yes, I am your chairman and I run the meeting, but it, it's our job to do our own homework, it's not the chairman's job to do the homework for the board. So, um, so at this point, we have three board members that are ready to join, and then after we meet with them, the other two board members can decide if that's the direction that they wanna go in, and they, they have that right to decide, okay?
Mrs. Zork, so my understanding is that perhaps Mrs. Esplin will be in conversation with Mrs. Messina to find an appropriate, um, date that will work for board members to have her come and, and speak with us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Alright. Okay, let's take, let's take a five-minute break, and, um...
Almost done.
Okay, alright. Sorry. Okay, so that ends our, our action items. At this time, is, is superintendent report, Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Most of the people that are still watching tonight may not be aware that we had some workshops earlier today. We presented a lot of information to the board, and I just wanna take some time to thank the staff members who were involved in that. We started off the morning with a budget workshop, and really wanna thank Kim Copman, our new director of finance, for all the work she did putting that together, and the whole staff of the finance department, and Lynn Justin, really, you know, putting the materials together, and really, you know, keeping us on task and ma, making sure we got all our deadlines met, so we could present that information to the board. And then in the afternoon, we presented a bunch of different information, um, the bulk of it in student services. So I wanna thank Heather Clark, um, Dr. Sharon Packer, Jessica Rojas, Pam Dampier, uh, for all their work with some really valuable information that was presented to the board about, you know, how we're doing things with our mental health plan, you know, trying to provide services to our students in need, and then also, um, PBIS, the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Programs that are in place at all of our schools, and how we're monitoring the effect of those to make sure that, you know, we're actually getting the desired results. And then we finished off the afternoon presentation with a little bit of information about coaching practices, or, or how we go about hiring coaches and training and supporting coaches, and wanna thank Dr. Perrinozzi for reaching out to the, all the ADs, the high school and middle school ADs, meeting with them last week to get the information. And then a special thank you to Coach Jankowski and Coach Coppola for coming this afternoon to present to the board. I know Coach Jankowski was, um, would rather have been at football practice, and so, and he did, I think, make practice before it was over, but, um, you know, that is a sacrifice for those two to come and, and present to the board. So I just wanna thank all the staff who, um, put all the time in to present information to the board today. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Um, at this time, we're moving on to discussion, and there is one item on the, on the agenda, the end-of-the-year activities, events, graduation, summer events, and school year 2019-20 preparations. Mrs. Rosario?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I have with me a chart of graduation and end-of-year events. Um, oh, just wanna pass it down. Mrs. Esplin, um, gave this to me, it is her chart. We have all been invited to all of the events via your calendar, um, so you'll have all of these obviously, you know, show up, and you RSVP whether you can make it or not. But here you have all of them on a spreadsheet. Uh, Mrs. Esplin has asked for all board members to look at the, um, calendar of the dates, and, um, all the way on the right, the last column is the signup. If you have already RSVP'd on your calendar, your initials will, will be there, or your name. Um, she has asked if board members would mind verifying, um, this, verifying your RSVP, and then, um, letting her know by Thursday. But in addition, uh, and then therefore she could, um, confirm with the schools, and the schools can handle their organization, or, you know, adding your name to their program for the different events. But I, I wanted to put this on the, um, on for discussion, because obviously, this, I'm a new board, I don't know what to expect for the summer months. Um, I don't know if you all know what to expect for July and August, um, or rather, for July is really my... really my, my biggest concern. I want to plan vacation time with my family as well, and so I know that we still have meetings, I know that our meetings are not as much, as many as we normally have, but I, I just wanted some feedback from you all on, on what to expect for the summer. Also, with regard to end year events, we don't get a chance, let me back up, let me talk about the end year events and graduations. For the month of June, I apologize, I should have said this before, for the month of June and because we all can't just talk on a, on a regular basis or, you know, on any other matter, I have some dates that I have RSVP'd maybe because my work schedule in the evening at the college has changed, and so I'm not sure if the college is going to allow me to take time off because the college is now entering into their summer session. If I am allowed to take off, then I will change my RSVP from maybe to a yes. But I wanted you all to know that in case you saw my name as maybe. And then, of course, on those that I RSVP'd yes, it's because I'm obviously allow, going to be there. So I wanted to let you all know my participation in the graduation and the upcoming events. And then I'd like to open it up for discussion regarding the summer.
So I'm going to give you my, if, if I can, I, I know typically chairs should go last, but I, I think we looked at July, we looked at our budget calendar today, so you need to make sure that you put those in. It's a heavy July on, on the, on the budget. And then based on us not knowing about, you know, we're, we're still in negotiations with the superintendent on his, his end date, you know, we really don't know, this is not going to be a typical year on dates that it's always been in the past because we don't know yet until we, we actually can get through knowing when the superintendent's end date is. And then we have the search and then we have, you know, this, the search team or whatever the process is, we're going to have to have those dates, and I, I'm assuming that that's going to happen over the summer. Go ahead.
Make a suggestion, because I know I have, I have travel in the summer, I have work-related travel and I have family travel. I can give those dates to Mrs. Esplin. If we can all give dates, we know we're not available and we can do our best to work around that, and frankly, if some of us are not around for certain things, we'll just have to accept that the rest of the board will, will make some of those decisions. Because I know that there's a span of about two weeks in July that I purposely booked because it was between board meetings. That's the only time when we get any length of time, and yes, this is a particularly challenging year, and I completely understand that, and I still have to manage all of the other things I have to manage. So I'll give those dates to Mrs. Esplin, the ones, there's, there's already some work-related travel I know I have to do in both June and July, I'll give her those dates. If you have to go ahead without me, you have to go ahead without me. So maybe we can all just operate on that, that, that assumption going forward. Would that answer your question?
Yes, yes, and I'd love to hear from other board members as well. I do know that we can participate remotely.
Right, and I'll Skype in when I can.
So I, I think that, that, you know, it's not like I would be planning on, you know, going international, but just so that I am able to plan, that's all, you know, just so that I'm able to understand what the expectation is. And I do recognize that this is, you know, odd and, you know, we're going into a, a very difficult season, summer, I mean, with regards to superintendent search.
Can I ask a question from the attorney? I, I sat on another state board and we didn't have it on our policy that we could vote, we had to be present to vote. Is that the same with our policy?
No, ma'am, the policy adopted by the board is as long as there's a quorum of the board physically present at the location of the meeting, anyone who wanted to participate remotely could participate as well as vote.
Okay. Can I ask a clarifying question on that, too? If there's a quorum of the board present and a board member is not present physically and if they are not able to be present for the discussion but know how they want to vote on something, are they able to give their vote, say confidentially, to you or somebody else to vote?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
So you can only vote if you are physically on the phone or on Skype?
If you are participating in the meeting, yes, there are no proxy votes for school board members.
Okay. Well, I, I know I'm going to be doing international travel, that's why I'm asking.
I really, at this time, I don't, I don't really see this to be a, a long discussion.
No, not at all. I just wanted to bounce, like, you know, as a new board member, I don't know what to expect, I don't know how to move forward with my own personal planning, so I, and I don't, and I did not want to hold this off until our next discussion session either because that's in May. And, you know, again, I have to plan for my family, so.
Any other discussion on this? Okay. See you none. So at this time, we're going to move on to school board member matters. I ask that, out of respect of time, that we try to, we try to limit this a little bit more than what we've been doing. So do I have any board members that would like to go? I think we should do the same that we do for our citizens. You know, we're, we allow them three minutes, we should only have three minutes.
I, I'm all for that.
Okay, go on.
All right, me?
Yep.
Okay, start the clock. I had three items.
Okay.
One, I was able to judge, be one of the judges for the First Annual Student Literacy and Media Festival at the Flic. I'd like to say thank you to Julie Milliman, who's the Indian River County School District media coordinator for organizing the event. Students read a book from the Florida Teens Read List and then created art to depict the book characters and events. It was awesome, it was their first attempt, I was very impressed. We, many of us went to scholarship night at Sebastian River High School. I'd like to say a big thank you to all the many donors and people that have rallied together to put on whatever events they can to raise money for our kids to be able to be successful and go on to college or career readiness. And I'd also like to say, this morning I participated at Vero Beach High School's emergency drills that they had. By participating, I sat and watched it basically. But when I got there, I was a little early, I found out about something that goes on in Ms. Ratliff's class, and so I attended her class today and for the first half hour until we went through the emergency drills, and she does a shark tank. And she's a business teacher, and business members from our community volunteered their time to go in there and be the sharks, and it was awesome to watch. And so I just said big hats off to her, and that's a great innovative thing to do, and the kids really enjoyed it and they worked hard to make their presentations, so. Just a shout out also to the Vero Beach High School staff, the active shooter drill that happened today was impressive on how organized, how concise everything was, just really wonderful to, to see that they are so prepared and their students are prepared, too, for anything. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Rosario?
No, I mentioned it last week that I visited with Wabasso School prior, but I know that last week our meeting was very, we had very, almost nobody here. Also, the scholarship night at Sebastian River High School was wonderful, it was a great opportunity to get to see all of the donations that came in and the children who rightfully gained scholarships for their future studies, so I am very excited for them, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Shipp?
Did a one scholarship night, totally inspirational, loved seeing kids being so encouraged to pursue their education and getting the resources and support they need to do that. I had no idea that happened to, to that degree, you know, with, with numbers in excess of ten, fifteen thousand dollars towards their college education. So I was incredibly impressed with the kids, with the number of, the number of community organizations who stepped up to give their personal and organizational money to kids to facilitate their, their academics, so looking forward to, to more of those, those events going forward, it was great. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sork. Thank you to staff today for the workshops, the budget workshop at ten o'clock and then at one o'clock, some of the updates from staff members regarding the work that we're doing to help support our students in mental health and positive behavior intervention support. Dr. Packard shared today that one in five children suffer from some type of mental illness and that only twenty percent of those children in the country actually receive some type of care and support. So as a school district, I'm happy to see that we are working to change that, and I look forward to continue collaboration with community partners to make sure that we are serving all of our students in the way that they individually need to be served, to pay, to lead successful and productive lives. That is it tonight for me, Mrs. Sork.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to superintendent closing. Dr. Rendell, do you have anything for closing?
I did miss a couple of people to thank for the workshops and presentations today. I want to thank Brandon and Chris from the video crew and Kristen and Nancy for, you know, making sure that we had all the materials that we needed and to sit through every single presentation, so appreciate that.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, so we're going to adjourn this meeting at eight fifty-one.